Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting. It's November 1st. This meeting is called back to order at 6:38 PM. Let's all rise, please, and Kathleen will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members may have a motion, please, in a second, that tonight's agenda dated November 1st be approved as submitted.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments on that? All those in favor, all in favor and none opposed? Board members may have a motion, please, in a second, that tonight's consent agenda as listed be approved.
So moved.
No? Oh, am I on? Is that better? Oh. I'm probably not close enough. And then I turn my head and I'm working on it. Sorry.
So that's okay. I...
Motion by Catherine. Second by Mark. Questions or comments on consent? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed. Thank you. We don't have a treacherous report, so we have special reports tonight.
We do. So we have one special report this evening, and that is, we, as the community knows and the board, we have, are engaging in a capital project that involves three phases. And before we invite some students up, we talk about stakeholders in these capital project planning and the work we do. And this capital project is focused on a transportation and B&amp;G facility, as well as working on many of our buildings, including the high school. And the library and the commons are two areas that are going to be renovated. And I want to give kudos to the high school principal, Mrs. Watt, who's here tonight, because she reached out and said, you know, as we're meeting with SEI architect to start really digging into more detailed plans now that the project is underway, can I bring students to those meetings? And so we haven't really done that to this extent, and I thought it was a great idea. So we have three students here tonight of many that were there. This is a slide of that day. They went to SEI architecture and they worked through a number of different teams to sort of dig into this work. And I appreciate, we've got Lily, Isaac, and Jackson here. If you guys want to come on up and just talk a little bit, I think you guys are well-prepared. But talk a little bit about, you know, the experience, what you found. And there is an additional mic if you, then you have a microphone. There's a handheld there if you guys want to do that, might make it easier. And if you could just introduce yourself and what grade you're in, and then I'll turn it over to you to talk a little bit about this process.
I'm Lily, and I'm a senior.
I'm Jackson, I'm a senior.
I'm Isaac, and I'm a junior.
So basically, we went on this capital improvement project field trip to the architecture firm, SEI, and it was a really great experience. It was like super, like we were super, it was like really inclusive with the architects, and we worked like directly with them on various improvement, like improvement things.
So I had the team rooms. So individually, we met in groups and went and talked to a specific space. So they brought us in and we saw photos of the existing team rooms. And then we saw pictures of college-level locker rooms that, to get us thinking of some ideas. And then we sat down and talked about pros and cons of the space that we had right now and talked about some improvements that we would like to see. So big things that we talked about in the team room is having more, like bigger locker spaces to fit more equipment, like lacrosse sticks, football pads, so that we could safely secure our items away. We talked about making a gathering space in the locker room so that during half times, we would be able to have a space where we could conjugate and talk about it. And other things we talked about were putting in some more bathroom stalls in the girls' locker room, taking away some of the unused space in the shower rooms, because we don't really use the showers as much, and then talked about making it a more inviting space than it is now.
Great.
So I'll be talking about the commons and outdoor spaces. So for the commons, we just, we did, really, we did the same thing at sort of all of the stations, where we were told to like write down some cons, write down what we would like to see, and then we sort of like sketched out like our own like ideas on like printed-out floor plans of the different rooms, which was very cool. And for the commons, we just sort of talked about having some more noise control, having some like dividers, so it can be used in different, like in different ways, like for lunches, for study halls even, for, for things like this, presentations. And then for the outdoor spaces, we sort of talked about just revitalizing them, planting some gardens, some pathways out in the library courtyard out here, maybe a fountain or something like that. We just kind of really had the ideas flowing, and everything was considered. Everyone's ideas were considered and everything like that. And we were also talking about for like the exterior, maybe painting some murals and something like that.
So in my cohort, I had the library, so we did basically the same thing. We listed some pros and cons about like our existing library. So the main thing that we wanted to improve on was supervision, because you know, at PHS, you know, student's priority, safety is, you know, most important. So we were thinking about moving the main desk to this side of the room, where the tech room is, because currently where our main desk is, supervision only goes as far as the left side, but not so right for the right side because of all the shelves that are blocking it. So we were thinking of moving the main desk to this side of the library. It might, it may require knocking down the tech room walls right there, but at the end of the day, you know, student safety is most important.
I, first of all, Isaac, I think it's unfair that you got to point things out and the other two didn't. I just want to say thank you to the three of you. Was anybody actually like thinking about being an architect? Is that...
That's what definitely got me wanting to go on this field trip, as I want to be an architect when I get older. So it was really nice to see hands-on and get my ideas and see what day-to-day life was for like them, you know? And the ability to have like the floor plans that they gave us so that we could actually draw what we were thinking was so nice of them. And they took every piece of paper that we drew, they took, took it all. They wanted to look over it, see all of our ideas.
Yeah, I'm considering it as well. And it was sort of like a mini apprenticeship. It was, it was very cool. And it was like, they were like, they had like food and stuff for us and little gift bags. It was, it was a really nice time. And it was really cool to see, to see what they do day-to-day.
Yeah. It was a cool experience, but you know, I'm just going to stick to music.
They, I will just tell you that Dr. Dripfo and I had the pleasure of meeting with SEI. We meet regularly in this project with SEI and campus construction and keep digging in and looking at things, because everything, whatever you designed, and they'll take those ideas, at the end of the day, it also has to fit into the budget of the capital project.
Yes.
Right? So things get moved. But I would just say that SEI, the architects who we meet with were like, they were amazed by the students that showed up. So not every school has done that. They haven't all had that opportunity. And they just, they talked for most of our meeting about how great it was to have students there and the voice and the fact that our students, even though you'll graduate, students will continue to follow behind you. So hearing that student voice, they were really impressed with, with Penfield High School students and how you all showed up. And there are many more of you that aren't here tonight that are up there in the picture. But it was great to also hear, I'm always a little proud when I hear something nice about Penfield, but hearing it from architects who are very professional and do this for a living and hearing what they had to say about, about all of you is really cool. Do you have anything else you want to share, or can I open it up to questions to the board?
Questions?
Yeah, we'll take questions.
Board members, questions? Catherine?
Yeah. Not necessarily questions. I have a tendency to, well, I'm, I'm easily amused, but not easily impressed. But I have to say that I am very impressed. Not only that you, you know, took the time, participated, and then made such a great impression to SEI, which, that should never be your goal. Your goal should be to pursue your, you know, pursue your interests and pursue your dreams. But then when you make us look good as a district, that's always just wonderful. And I'm really very happy to hear that some of you have an interest in doing this. And now you've had some experience, you know, giving it a try. And hopefully that will, you can continue to pursue that. And so I was, that is a question I have. Do you think because you went on this field trip that, did it spark it? Or did it, like, it was there and you became aware of it? How did it affect you in that way?
Do you want to speak first?
Yeah, sure. So I had been, I've always been really interested in architecture ever since I was little. And it's sort of like fallen off my radar in the past couple of years. I don't know why. But going on this field trip, yeah. But going on this field trip kind of definitely revitalized my interest in that sort of thing. And then I never, this is like definitely one of the coolest field trips I've ever been on, because I've never really seen like a day-to-day life sort of thing like this.
Yeah.
And for it to be in something that I'm interested in was even better, because it definitely sparked a greater interest in architecture.
Well, I think that's wonderful. And thanks for presenting tonight. I don't think that that's easy to do, so I appreciate you coming in tonight.
Yeah, of course.
Mark?
I was going to say that, you know, it's, groups like SEI, their job is to listen to feedback. And would you, and you've provided the feedback that us, that we can ever do. And Catherine and I have been on the facility committee. We provide feedback. Tom and the, and the staff provide feedback. But, you know, it's not from your perspective, not from the user perspective, really. Right? So that's great. And I'm really looking forward, and they're great at taking that feedback, all the stuff we've done, and incorporating it. So I'm really looking forward to seeing what they've done to incorporate the feedback that you provided. And I'm sure they'll point it out, too. So we will know.
That was my question. Is there going to be like a Phase Two student field trip?
I, I think based on these students, yes. I don't think we could say no to that. And just, you know, in closing, I'll tell you, what I really heard tonight, and, you know, I didn't know what. I just came over before the meeting. I asked, Mrs. Watt was sort of raving about, you know, the experience and having you over there and what you had shared. And so I said, "Come to the board." Let's, you know, I think this is a great piece in just kind of pointing out some of the things we do beyond the walls of school. And so what was really neat to hear is, I think sometimes, you know, as we get older, we don't always think of like, you know, what students are going to say, right? And I, I think anybody who works in schools, we're always kind of connected to how amazing students are. But, you know, Isaac, you talked about like your number one priority is safety in, in the library. And, you know, it wasn't like, you know, well, we need vending machines everywhere, and we need disco balls. And like, you know, it's like really good stuff. Same with the commons, the thought process of finding other areas and sound and how we can maybe utilize it for different things. And the team room, really about locker size and being able to secure our valuables. And a lacrosse stick is not going to fit in a typical locker. So just really, again, this thoughtful piece, and I know from talking to Mrs. Watt, all the students who were there sort of brought that same, really, you took it seriously. And SEI took it seriously. So again, just thank you so much. And now as we go through the process, you'll see, you know, we'll definitely be able to see where the changes they made. And then as I told you, and for the community listening, too, is at the end of the day, we've been approved for an amount of money, and that's the money we have to stay under for all three phases. But I think it'd be really cool to see some of those pieces in place. And again, right to the user, which is the students who are using those spaces more than anybody else. So I appreciate it. Thank you very, very much. And please, thank you, Mrs. Watt as well.
Thank you so much for having us.
I'll send you guys pictures, don't worry.
And, and please know that as much as you would still love the experience, in case you wanted to be a board member or superintendent later in your life, you are absolutely free to leave right now and enjoy the rest of your night. All right, that actually concludes superintendent, special reports.
Special reports, perfect. So then we have our student rep report. Lila?
Good evening. So just to begin with a couple of district-wide updates. So last week was our Red Ribbon Week, which is our pledge to be drug-free. And November is Native American Heritage Month. So at PHS today, we had another Community Building Day, where we focused on team-building activities to really connect with each other and then also discuss grading practices that we find helpful. Mrs. Lozio, Mrs. Garone, and Mr. Broomefield's classes all created Dia de los Muertos projects. And the PHS play, The Canterville Ghost, will be presented in two weeks. NHS had its annual Pumpkin Palooza contest, with prizes being given out for the scariest and most creative pumpkins. The cheer team placed second at sectionals. Best Buddies was invited to the Champion of the Year Gala. The robotics team had a costume contest and built pumpkin racers. And tonight is the girls' volleyball semifinals against Brighton at 7:00 PM. At Bay Trail, students taking Computer Concepts listened to a guest speaker about cybersecurity. And Bay Trail students were very involved in Red Ribbon Spirit Weeks, Spirit Days, including Jersey Day, Eighties Day, and Backwards Day. And all these students also signed pledges during their lunches to be drug-free. At the elementary schools, starting at Scribner, Scribner had its annual costume parade, which was always a lot of fun, and I remember it, and I just absolutely loved it. At Cobles, Mrs. Dietz's class learned about music and culture in Ghana and played a stone passing game. At Indian Landing, second graders learned about the different types of terrariums. And at Harris Hill, they had their annual Spooktacular last Friday, which is sponsored by the PTA. And students in Mrs. Mendelson's and Mrs. Ed Borg's class created virtual self-portraits to kick off Red Ribbon Week. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Board members, questions for Lila? Did you carve a pumpkin?
I did. We did not win. But that's okay.
What happened to the pumpkins after you're done?
So they were all donated to the community garden. So it was very nice. Yeah.
Very nice.
Thank you. All right, you're up. Super reports.
Great. So we do have a few reports. I have some student and staff honors, an update on our community conversations, and I just have a slide on building emergency response plans. And then Dr. Dripfo has some business updates. So writing awards, talking about great high school students. Torrin Crowley and Noah Banister recently earned awards in the Anrand Institute's Anthem Essay Contest. Torrin and Noah both earned semifinalist distinction, placing them in the top 85 students in the world. Congratulations to Torrin and Nora. Volunteers, last meeting, we had students coming here and talking about how Varsity Sports were collecting and gathering supplies and food for EI Towers in partnership with Penfield 585 and, or sorry, 585 Primetime. And it's one of many ways we volunteer. Members of the Penfield High School varsity baseball, wrestling, and girls' tennis teams all volunteered to help move and sort books for the Friends of Penfield Public Library's annual book sale. Way to go. So just again, our students beyond just being students in Penfield continue to volunteer and support our communities near and far. Science grant, just a shout-out to our STEAM TOSA Shane Waterson and the director of STEAM Nicole Whitehead for working with the Bosch Community Fund to provide grant funding for OpenSci Ed Classroom Kits for grades six through eight. This is incredible. Bosch has, they actually entered into and worked really closely with Bosch over in the past in order to get classroom science kits, hands-on science kits for our elementary, like K-5, and got grant money. And we've, I've talked about this in past board meetings. And this was huge, because they were able to continue that grant funding for our middle-school age students. And it really is sort of hands-on science kits that they utilize. So again, whenever we can utilize grant funding to support the great stuff we do. So kudos to Shane Waterson and Nicole Whitehead. And I will turn it over to, in a moment. So I want to be very honest, and I will always own the mistakes I make. And there's supposed to be a slide right here that I didn't add. And so that slide, the board is aware, is that after many years of absolute dedication, hard work, commitment, and, and focus, I'm really proud to announce, but she gets all the credit, is I'm not turning it over to Tasha Potter. I'm turning it over to Dr. Potter, who successfully defended her dissertation. I think it's important to note, before I turn it over to Dr. Potter, that in New York State, there is no requirement for anybody in the field of public education to have a doctorate. Superintendents don't need a doctorate. In Monroe County, most of them don't have it. It really is a commitment, as I look at it, to what we talk about in public education. And in every interview, it's usually maybe overused now, but about the commitment to lifelong learning. And earning a doctorate, to me, is truly that commitment in action. It takes you away from your family. It takes you away from your friends. It takes you away from reading anything but research focused on your work. It takes you away from incredible Netflix television programs. It really is an incredible time commitment. And it showcases truly the, the work and the investment in learning, which then, as educators, we continue to encourage our students to reach their passion and do whatever they want in life. And so, you know, I'm really, it's, it's amazing that you don't need it. And our senior admin team at District Office all have one. And so I don't know another district that's like that. Doesn't make us special, doesn't make us super. But what it does showcase is how, how much we care about the world of education and bettering ourselves. And I can just tell you, Superintendent, Dr. Potter, you never once didn't show up for something for your job. You just did the doctorate and the job together. And I, I earned mine when I was a principal. I would never have been able to complete it in a district office role. So kudos, thank you. And we are, on behalf of the Penfield and the entire board, just really proud. So thank you for, for being with us and for all your hard work and dedication to our students. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Potter. Oh, yes.
So I was not expecting that.
Right?
And absolutely not necessary, but so appreciated. So thank you all very much. You're absolutely making my heart smile this evening. So I'm so excited to have this be a part of my journey and being able to accomplish this as I continue to work alongside all of you and to serve our families and our faculty and our students here in the Penfield Central School District. So thank you. I will start this evening to just bring into view for everyone. We held a, our second community conversation this school year, and it was titled Prioritizing SEL, Social Emotional Learning, Really Essential for Learning and Essential for Life. It was facilitated by the Children's Institute. And our two key facilitators were Elizabeth Devaney and Mereen Mustafa George. They both brought to us last Tuesday a conversation that really helped the community understand their partnership with us, but also naming what social-emotional learning looks like and specifically what SEL is not. They shared last Tuesday that it's not behavior management. It's not a way to identify deficits in our students. It's not only for students with social-emotional needs. It is not mental health education. It is not counseling or psychotherapy. It's not about teaching values and replacing our families as our partners in this work and the role that they have. And it's not about wasting time, our academic time. But rather, they shared with us that SEL is, so social-emotional learning is the process through which people of all developmental stages acquire and apply the knowledge, the skills, and the attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. And the work around social-emotional learning, we have shared before that we are really utilizing the New York State Education Department's social-emotional learning benchmarks. But there's also research to support the benefits of social-emotional learning. And here are just a few of those examples that they shared with us as part of the community conversation last week, that really, it improves social-emotional skills in our students. It's an opportunity to provide positive attitudes about self, others, and the school, community, and the environment. It's about positive classroom behavior. 11% gain on standardized tests. I think that they really emphasize that without social-emotional learning, we aren't able to see the outcomes, the academic outcomes and benefits for our students. Social-emotional learning provides long-term life skills, economic success, and employability for our students. We think about the role that we play in education. You know, it's really from cradle to college and then on to career. And so just thinking about the importance of all of the role that we share, whether it's the school community or our relationships with our families. It's really fewer conduct problems, less emotional stress, and it helps to reduce bullying. And so this question was posed at the beginning of the community conversation to our families. And they engaged us in a jamboard activity. And so this was a place where families could really go in and answer the question by sharing the skills, the strengths, the attributes that they wanted their children to acquire by the time that they graduated from Penfield High School. And there are a few examples, because it's hard to, to read, but I want to read just a few that I was able to kind of just pull out. They wanted, families wanted their children, upon graduation, to be good humans, to be inclusive, to have a moral compass, to make ethical decisions, to have coping strategies, to be problem solvers, to know and have soft skills, to be able to manage their own emotions, to be community-focused, to honor diverse perspectives, and have personal awareness. So that's not all of the things that are represented on this slide, but just a few that I wanted to, to highlight, because it is difficult to read. But just knowing that as a community, there are things that we're all naming that are aligned with the SEL benchmarks that have been set out by the state for us. And in closing, the question that was asked, you know, what additional questions do you have or reflections? And the reflections that came from the participants were that they were grateful, that it was a great start and being very appreciative of the opportunity to continue to share feedback and on how to continue to improve as a district. A participant also shared that they appreciate the opportunity to collaborate and communicate between administrators and teachers and parents. Another participant shared that they wanted to stay committed, because this matters. And then appreciative of the parent perspectives, that we were seeking family perspectives. So all in all, again, this is our second community conversation this school year and wanting to bring to the community just some of those details that emerged as part of our meeting, but really emphasizing what social-emotional learning is and what it is not, but more importantly, that it's anchored in research.
Yeah, so I appreciate that, Dr. Potter. And I think, you know, this is our second community conversation of this school year, pre-COVID. I like to say, pre-COVID. It's something that the district has always been committed in, in terms of community conversations, working with our parent-teacher organizations for such things as Parent University and, you know, trying to bring things of importance to our community out and present and, and share. Our first one was Zach Evans in Family Composition. And Zach is a graduate of Penfield, working on his doctorate at University of Buffalo, I believe. So that perspective of having someone who had been a Penfield grad and now is, you know, really focused in on academics, did some PD for us and then brought this in-person. So we held that one in-person. I want to be honest and open is that, you know, there were 18 community members there, not including administration, faculty, and staff. And just a huge thank you to our administration, our faculty, and our staff who show up for those events, especially our, our administrators, who are really working in our buildings to lead the work. And really, it's been wonderful. But it's always a little disappointing when we have more Penfield staff than, than community. And that was in-person, and in-person is difficult, and there's never a perfect time. So when we move forward with our second community conversation around SEL, we look... So, when we move forward with our second community conversation around SEL, we looked at, we did RSVP to try to like see how many numbers we had. And then, at the end of the first week, we reviewed that and made a determination on whether we do it in person or we move to virtual. And our numbers were pretty low, so we moved to virtual and put information out about that. We had 19 community members and still a great number of staff who were there to support the work and also because they're interested and supportive. And then, we did have some technical issues, so we're learning that, you know, there's no perfect time, there's no perfect vehicle in terms of in-person versus virtual. So, we had three individuals that were unable to join us due to some tactical issue. So, we've, working on some things if we do another virtual community conversation, how we can, you know, make sure that those things are taken care of. And so, we do have others planned. We have two other community conversations already planned. We shared those in August. They're on our webpage. We'll share as they continue to come up and get closer with our community. And we'll continue to sort of make determinations on whether in-person or virtual is better. I think I've heard from probably the same number of people that want in-person, and I've heard from people who want virtual because it's easier to manage, you know, maybe children at home and also come on. And if anybody came to the SEL, you saw my wonderful introduction with a four-year-old on my lap who decided he didn't want to watch Paw Patrol but wanted to sit with me. So, those are the pieces we're always looking at. There's no perfect spot. And so, again, you know, we're always open for communication one-on-one with members in our community who have questions. And we'll continue to look at and evaluate our community conversations. The other thing I point is, there's not typically a cost to our community conversations. There is the cost of time. So, you know, every time we have one and principals are there, they're not at home. And so, trying, you know, that is the piece that we want to try to balance on how we continue to share information with our greater community and also make sure that we're hitting the needs of our community and our staff. Because except for me, I think they don't have a contract that says I work 24 hours a day. So, I think it's just me that has that in my contract with the board. So, that's it. But I, again, thank you, Dr. Potter, for that presentation, for all of the administrators and staff who show up and support the work, and for our community members who join. So, thank you. And I'll turn it over to the board if there's any questions.
Questions on that, anyone? No, no questions?
I thought it was great. I actually wrote down sticky notes, so, because I couldn't remember what it was called. And I'm really glad that you shared that because I thought it was a really interesting question. And then, when parents were sharing and families were sharing, it wasn't really academic-focused. It was all those other skills that we talk about. So, I think it was really great. So, appreciate you sharing. Thank you.
And one of the conversations I had with a parent afterwards was interesting, too, is like, it's always that reminder, too, is that in life, it is not always an or or an and, right? So, like, when we talk about our work around social emotional learning tied to New York State benchmarks, Penfield, as the board note, we've always done SEL. We just called it Whole Student. It's been a board goal. We've always been working on it and putting things in place and looking at research for years and years. And so, it is not SEL or academics. It's SEL and academics, which you'll continue to see with, you know, our students who present and our graduation rates and all the great work that we do. So, it's always about an and, and I love the connection that the research shows around. When you have those strong SEL connections in school, students do better. And I keep thinking about that. I thought about all through that presentation is it's the same with your job in the real world. If you have a boss who supports you and encourages you and you feel like happy going to work, you're going to be more productive and put more into it than if you drive by to get a third cup of coffee and you don't want to go in. And to me, that's just a nutshell. And I've had one of those jobs, right? Wasn't as productive as being, feeling connected to the work you do. All right, I'm done talking about SEL. But thank you again. And now, I turn it to, oh, it's back to me, sorry. So, Penfield Central School District Building Response Plans, just two slides. Just so you're aware, Board, New York State Ed requires that districts and buildings provide, submit updated district and building-specific emergency response plans every year. The Board of Education is required to approve these plans in regular board session. What's unique is that the way the timeline works is we typically are submitting them to SCD prior to the board approving them because the SCD can kick them back if we need to make changes. And so, once they're officially approved, we bring it to the board for the approval, which is required by New York State. And if we had them approved beforehand, we'd be having to come back to potentially approve multiple times. So, this is the process districts across the state use. The board did, back in July, approve the district emergency response plan, that's for the whole district. And then, building-specific emergency response plans are updated in partnership with our principals, our school-based teams, as well as local law enforcement. And the building emergency response plans were submitted to New York State in the business portal prior to the deadline of September 28th, 2022. And they've been approved through the state now, and that's why we're bringing it to the board tonight for board approval. Just a little bit of the pieces, the building emergency response plans, the teams were all updated, the staff directories are updated, the building emergency response plans have been submitted. We also provided copies per requirement to local law enforcement, so they are held in confidential knowledge so that if there were ever any kind of emergency, they would know what our plans were, who the contacts were in our process. And then, again, as I've mentioned, the final requirement is the board adopt the building emergency response plans. The building emergency response plans are based on law, not open to the public. They are considered a closed document in the sense that they really are what each building would do in the case of many different types of emergencies. And that information, rightfully so, the state doesn't want just out for everybody to take a look at. But we take these very seriously, thanks to Mr. Fox and his work with building security, as well as all of our building teams and the focus on making sure that our students are, students and staff are always supported in safety and security. Questions?
Board members, questions on the updates? Nope, I think we're good.
I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl.
Thanks, Dr. Potter. Good evening, Board. Happy November to everybody. Hope Halloween was fun. Just a couple of action items from my office this evening, on your agenda this evening. The first of which is a tutoring agreement with Sylvan Learning Center. This is something we do annually in partnership with Mercy. Mercy, as a district, a private school within our locality, we serve as the lead educational agency, so they get federal Title I money. That money flows through us. We pay for the tutoring for kiddos that attend there. The second item is authorization to participate in a BOSI's bid for furniture. So, this is a BOSI's that we don't typically work with, Downstate Eastern Suffolk. They asked us to specifically have board authorization to participate in the bid. Typically, at the reorg meeting, we get a blanket approval that any BOSI's approved bids are fine. But, you know, this Downstate BOSI's just really asked us to get the explicit approval. So, we'll be looking to purchase some lockers off of this bid. Some good pricing there. And then, the third item I have for you is just the approval of the 2023-2024 Budget Development Calendar that we reviewed at our last meeting. If the board sees fit to approve that, the first budget discussion we'll have is our meeting in December, in which we'll review the budget, goals, guidelines, and factors, and also our annual reserve plan. And then, plenty more meetings come spring. And that's it for me.
Board members, any questions for Dan? These are all going to be action items later.
I don't understand the BOSI's bid. If you wouldn't mind just elaborating a bit?
Yeah, so, BOSI's sort of serve as a natural cooperative, right? So, it's typically a group of districts. Here locally, we're Monroe One, so it's a dozen districts or so on the side of the county. Oftentimes, there's a staff representative at that BOSI's that just works with procurement. So, they're like the purchasing agent for the BOSI's who in turn then applies that pricing for the local BOSI's. So, instead of us going out and doing a bid for ourselves for lockers that, at this spec, this BOSI's has already done it at attractive pricing. So, by way of New York State Education Law and our municipal law, we're allowed to utilize that BOSI's bid. Because we're not a component member of that Eastern Suffolk BOSI's, they just want us to approve it at the board level.
Thank you.
Your turn.
I asked that, too. I was, it just was because it's not usually not part of the consent agenda or part of, yeah, the org meeting. So, I appreciate that because it does get confusing, or it seems different than our normal practice.
A little bit.
Other questions? No, we're good. All right.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, that brings us to our public comment period. Instructions to participate in public comment are listed in your agenda and available online. The board will not be responding to comments during this session, so any concerns raised will be referred to district administration for follow-up as needed. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address and limit their comments to three minutes or less. Please do not name a specific student or staff in public session and be respectful of others in your words, conduct, and demeanor by following our code of conduct. We have several speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Turgen. Good evening. Please state your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me? Kristen Turgen, 67, Cobble's Drive. I'm here on behalf of Penfield Anti-Racist Alliance, and I brought some friends with me. We just want everyone to see our faces and remember that we are always here. We are the changemakers, the revolutionaries, and the ones that acknowledge the harm done by our ancestors and are working to create a more just and equitable society. Everyone can see that it's happening. Just look at this board. We have mobilized, advocated, and most importantly, voted to make sure you are in these seats. These lovely people that are here with me tonight are full humans with full lives. And while we may not show up to each board meeting in person, trust and believe we are watching and we know what's going on. Let me be clear, we are not here tonight because we fear that the nonsense and hate spewed by some individuals at these meetings, or at teachers, or at administrators will deter you from your work. We are confident that we have elected you all to be here to carry out the goals of equity and justice for all of our children. We are simply here tonight as a reminder that we support you. We know that it's not easy to sit where you are and not react to the elitist, racist, and transphobic rhetoric that is brought into this room, meeting after meeting. Please remember that we are grateful for the work that you are doing, and we will continue to support and encourage more. I would also like to publicly applaud any and all measures in the schools that give students the opportunity to fully celebrate their identities and grow in self-confidence. So many of our students do not fall in the rigid, white, cisgendered box that people try to put them in, and they deserve to feel safe and comfortable in their schools. Gender-neutral bathrooms, giving kids the opportunity to share pronouns or names, and making sure students see diverse representation in educational materials and learn true history do not cause harm to anyone. In fact, these are literally life-saving measures, and I know I am not exaggerating when I say this. Black and brown LGBTQIA youth hold multiple identities that are marginalized in a society that treats white cisgender people as the norm. 48% of multiracial LGBTQ youth reported seriously considering suicide over the past year, and it's 55% for our transgender and non-binary youth. We are all responsible for protecting our kids' rights to their identities and safety throughout our community. Some of the people that have come into this room with their divisive and hateful speech are parents who are directly and indirectly teaching their children to bully and abuse kids that are not exactly the same as them. Our schools need to directly challenge this bigotry every day. It is our job to end the cycle of hate and abuse through education, compassion, and unwavering advocacy. Neutrality has no place here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Boyle. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Noela Boyle, and I live at 16 Silver Fox Drive. I am the proud mom of three children, all of whom are students at Penfield High School. And I just wanted to express my gratitude today for the positive changes that have happened in the curriculum. I don't know how many of you on the board or in the room are parents to teenage children, but I think the majority of you can certainly empathize and possibly visualize what it is like to try to hold a conversation with one of those said teens. And it's normally crickets. Either they're engaging with you with resentful moroseness, or they're asking for a ride somewhere, money to fund something or other. And it's not very often that teenagers initiate and engage in lengthy conversations with a parent trying to have a certain outcome, without trying to have a certain outcome come from that conversation. And the story I want to share is one that is opposite of those experiences. And it's because of the changes that happened to the Penfield High School curriculum, and it's because of the encouragement for teachers to examine the content of their courses to ensure representation of all stories and histories. It's because of all these things that I was actually able to engage in a conversation with my ninth-grade daughter, which she initiated, all because of what she was learning in one of her classes. I was expecting the usual car ride home from our lacrosse practice in Henrietta, all 25 minutes of listening to her music or watching her scroll on her phone, anytime I went to talk, of course. Really, what? What? You know, take out an AirPod. Instead, during that ride home, she took the time to share things that she was learning in one of her classes. And she even asked me to listen to a TED Talk with her that she watched in class that day, and then she was re-listening and re-watching with me. And then, we stayed in the garage, you know, for an extra, I don't even know length of time, could have been 30 minutes before we went into the chaos of more teenagers and dogs, et cetera, in the home. The reason why I'm sharing this is that that teaching allowed for her to engage in conversations about her own bias, about an awareness, about raising to recognize the socialization that we all have for something as minor as thinking about the type of driver that's in front of you and how slow they are and what their age might be. I'm so proud of her, proud of her sharing her learning, proud of her for knowing that these were important life lessons that she wanted to talk to me about. And I've had conversations about these with my children at home, with my students at the college that I work at. But this is the first time my daughter actually demonstrated to me that learning and those understanding of the concepts of bias. When school and home align and the teaching that leads to self-awareness and community values of inclusion, true education, true growth occurs. I'm most grateful for the ability my daughter now has to be more aware of herself and how to work towards eliminating such bias in order to create a more inclusive world. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Simpson.
My name is, my name is Joe Simpson, and I live at 58 Shirewood Drive. Clearly, I'm not a parent of a Penfield student, but I am a community member and a member of PARA, Penfield Anti-Racist Alliance. As a community member, I have an investment in the welfare of kids in our district. After all, it takes a village to raise a child. I'm speaking to you this evening to say that I want my kids, my, I want kids like my grandkids, like my neighbors' kids, to understand the truth about our history in our community and in our country. I know you, that you understand that this is not about making white kids feel guilty. It's not about that at all. It's about their learning to take responsibility for changing our community and country to be equitable for all. And I mean equitable, not just equal. This is a matter of justice. Justice. That said, I'm encouraged that the district, this board, superintendent are committed to a broad, anti-racist and culturally sensitive curriculum and equity for black and brown students. I want you to know that we who support your efforts are in the majority in Penfield. I encourage you to keep working on eliminating disproportionality, to advocate for ongoing anti-racist education. anti-racist education for teachers and staff, and for hiring teachers of color and administrators of color. One more thing. Couple of years ago, Leonard Pitts, an editorial writer for the Miami Herald, asked the question, "What do kids think about education which explores racism?" Please find out. It's important. I'm a member of the, I'm also a member of the Coalition, Rochester Coalition for Public Education. We've developed a very short survey and lesson plan for a high school classroom about exploring racism. My prediction, and it's a prediction, is that our young people are very interested in learning about authentic American history as it relates to race. I'll forward that proposal to Dr. Putnam. Thanks so much for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Mur.
Dana Mar, 1690 Cultural Road. At the last school board meeting, there were updates shared about new equitable grading practices that will be used within the Penfield School District. As you are aware, children learn in many different ways and have many different needs. It is vital that the district meets students where they are at in best supporting their individual academic needs. It seems there is a more vital priority to find ways to effectively support each child's needs academically, socially, and emotionally than to be modifying grading practices to have the grade better fit the student's ability. Academic success has an immediate impact on a student's social and emotional well-being. Adopting a new grading practice may solve the issue of that student feeling they have a better grade. However, no way corrects for the frustration and struggle that child may feel when they are unable to figure out that math problem, or understand a new concept being taught, especially when they move into the next grade level, and are behind on understanding important concepts in order to further build on their education. New York State Education Law, Section 504, also known as FAP, outlines that a free, appropriate, and public education is provided to each qualified person with a disability regardless of the nature or severity of the person's disability. My fearing concern is that by implementing this new grading policy, that many students may be overlooked in respect to their learning needs and academic supports they so desperately need by masking these needs with a modified grade when students are either struggling to learn a new educational concept or are not turning assignments in. There are students falling between the cracks. Less than 40% of students in New York State passed the last math assessment, which is alarming. This new grading policy may actually make it more difficult to recognize signs that a student is struggling and in need of additional learning support. SEL groups and SEL surveys that might be argued as a solution are, however, not being conducted by qualified clinical experts who can accurately assess students who may be academically struggling or struggling in other ways that may have direct impact on their academic success and learning. How is the district providing equitable academic support, which seems priority over equitable grading practice? How are these supports being provided for in least restrictive and most inclusive manner, especially in consideration of current limitations on the district's ability to accommodate integrated classes for students with a disability, in combination with losing 30 minutes of daily instruction time to SEL activities? How is the district meeting the needs of the student that may need a smaller class size, adaptive equipment, additional instructional supports, or in some cases, additional work per New York State Education Commissioner's Regulations 142.2 reflective to the needs of a gifted pupil, where not being challenged enough, challenged enough can also have impact on their social, emotional well-being? I ask you, is the district adequately preparing every student to achieve their greatest potential for success upon reaching adulthood? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Jessup. Please state your name and address.
Florence Jessup, 2896 Atlantic Avenue. I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Potter, Potter, for the community conversations. I got to participate and listen to Jacque Evans, I mean Zach Evans, online, and was struck about what he talked about and how that fit in with a public comment I heard here several weeks ago. During that public comment period, a person expressed concern about a form used by an art teacher. The form allowed the adult to complete it, to fill in their own relationship to the child instead of just assuming that they were a parent. As we learned in Zach's presentation, there are many types of family structures. In fact, what we think of as a traditional family of a mom and a dad and their kids hasn't been the norm for two generations. A family is actually more likely to be made up of a dad and a stepmom, or two moms, or even grandparents raising their grandchildren. That teacher's form allowed for all those family structures and gave the teachers relevant information about their students' lives. I've even had the experience where I would be completing that form for a child who was part of my family, but I was not their parent. It happened when a fellow church member became ill and was unable to care for their child, so I volunteered to care for her. Charity was part of my family beginning in fourth grade and still calls me mom more than 30 years later. In turn, Charity has done the same for a child in her congregation. That child was part of Charity's family throughout high school. For both of us, a form that didn't assume we were a parent would have allowed us to explain our child's real-life experience to their teacher. I look forward to attending the presentation about the indigenous peoples of the Penfield area and Justin Murphy's presentation about the history of race and racism in Rochester area schools. It is important that the community and the school board understand this history because it impacts our children's lives today. We cannot successfully educate our children if we do not recognize their actual lived experiences. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Scorsone. I did that wrong, didn't I?
No, you didn't.
I did it. Okay. Thank you. I had it down. I had it down, and then I second-guessed myself. That's what I do.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Amory Scorsone. I reside at 11 Creekside Circle in Penfield. I'm here today as a mother of twins in Bay Trail Middle School, but also as a member of Penfield Anti-Racist Alliance. You know, I wrote two speeches tonight. The first one was full of anger, vitriol, and was very reactionary, where I called people names like xenophobic, Bible thumper, bigots. And I thought to myself, I am no different than that if I was to have given that speech. And I thought, on this Day of the Dead, it was best to honor my ancestors, who were Sicilian immigrants that had to build their own church in Mount Morris, New York, because the white majority would not allow them to attend St. Patrick's. I realized that in this day and age, we need to be better, and so I ask all of you to choose to fill your hearts and minds with kindness and love. Almost all faiths on earth have some element of charity, helping those who are not like you, choosing to lift up those who are different and less fortunate, and affording them not only opportunities to the same rights and privileges and to the pursuit of happiness, but giving them dignity and freedom. The world has changed vastly in my 44 years on earth, and I think it's long overdue that we treat those who are different, that are not white, able-bodied, cis people, with grace, peace, and love. So if that asks, so if that means asking kids for pronouns, or having gender-neutral bathrooms, or an anti-racist curriculum, so be it, because it's not just demonizing others, it's making us lose sight of not only ourselves, but our visions of a civilized world. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Ms. Jenick.
Good evening. Please.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Jensek. I am, I reside at 15 Cassidy Court in Penfield. I am a mother to 21 children, 14 of whom have intellectual and developmental disabilities. I also am the president of a not-for-profit advocacy organization that helps parents navigate some of the early challenges and, you know, we kind of target the zero-to-five-age group, navigating the challenges associated with having a child with disabilities and needing early intervention or preschool special ed services. So I'm here tonight on behalf of, you know, not only my children and my family that is in the district, but also other families that are in the district. I've discussed this issue with a few people that are here tonight, and we've had great conversation, but in the interest of due diligence, I wanted to speak to the whole board. I'm here to address concerns regarding the opportunities for integration that are or aren't available for students in the self-contained classrooms in Penfield. Each child in this district is entitled to have access to their gen ed peers and the gen ed curriculum when appropriate. This is not happening the way it should. Special ed students are not currently being given appropriate opportunities for integration, and this is not only not okay, it's illegal. As I listened to all the benefits of SEL that Dr. Potter shared, it struck me that this is exactly what most bothers me about this issue right now. The limited opportunities for integration are in direct conflict with exactly everything that was just stated as being so beneficial for our students. This is not okay. Parents know this, the district knows this, the state knows this, our children even know this. I believe we all want what's best for our children, but in this case, we need to do better.
Thank you. Good evening. Please state your name and address.
My name is Carmen Leonardo, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Penfield United for Education Excellence. My address is 1915 Penfield Road. Whenever we ask questions about curriculum or SEL, the administration points to the state's standards, the benchmarks, the culturally responsive, sustaining education framework. And I'm sure you know that the framework, by, and by extension, the work that's done in the schools, seeks to empower our children to become agents of social change. You should ask yourselves, where else in history have children been used as agents of social change? Here are a few examples. In Mao's Cultural Revolution, youth were indoctrinated and used as soldiers to carry out the communist agenda, eventually bringing destruction not only to towns and villages, but to families and cultural institutions. In Stalinist Russia, government-run kindergartens were set up to promote community child-rearing, breaking up the family to free up parents, women in particular, so that they could be committed socialists. Meanwhile, their children would be groomed to be committed socialists of the future. In Germany, youth groups of all ages were effectively used to create a cadre of Nazi soldiers that were then shoved off to commit atrocities of war and more in the name of the state. A common theme in all of these is that social change was the disruption of family, social order, the targeting of divergent viewpoints, and creating scapegoats for the failures of the state. Going back to the cultural responsive teaching, everything you do, the curriculum, the transformative SEL, the DEI initiative, Grading for Equity, all have their roots in this document, which is based on models of critical theory and critical pedagogy. The framework cites as references well-known critical theorists. Yet, you say you aren't, not teaching critical race theory. A member of this administration represented that cultural responsive teaching has its basis on critical race theory. The framework itself corroborates this. You are playing word games. You have been dishonest to parents and the community. This speaks to the continued lack of transparency and frankly, the Board of Education's abdication of its oversight and accountability role. Let me say that again. The Board of Education's abdication of its oversight and accountability role. You say you are not teaching critical racist, critical race theory, excuse me, but that's like saying that apples are not in the strawberry jam, but the pectin is. Thank you.
Okay, board members, we're on to facilities on our agenda, item six. May I please have a motion in a second that the building emergency response plan, as amended and described by Dr. Putnam earlier, be approved?
Some move.
Catherine and Kristin, any comments or questions on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? We're moving on to item seven. We're going to do the district contract with Sylvan Learning Center as described by Dr. Triffel in the amount not to exceed $62,097.62 of title, paid through Title I funding. May I have a motion, please, in a second, that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with Sylvan Learning Center on behalf of Our Lady of Mercy?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Emily, second by Kristin. Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? And then we're going to move on to the BOSI's bid resolution. So there is a recommendation for the resolution approval for authorization to participate in the BOSI's furniture bid. May I have a motion, please, in a second for that?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Catherine. Questions, comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. And then we're going to move on and approve, may I please have a motion and a second, that the board approves the 2223, or I'm sorry, 2324, that's taking us backwards, budget development calendar is presented.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Catherine, second by Kristin. Any questions on that one? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? I can't believe we're talking about 2324. That's kind of scary.
Yeah.
Policy committee, we have, do you want to take that? We did, we did a bunch of stuff this past time.
Yeah, we just have one policy, we just have one policy for first read, that is policy 5661, Neil, charging and prohibition against male shaming. For those of you keeping score at home with our policies, you may remember that we just did first and second read on this policy in, we approved it in September. We made some changes to it based on feedback from Dr. Driffl and Ms. Sunson, our director of food service, around when we send reports home, and it was four days, and we changed to five days to make it a weekly, easier process. And in that review, what came up was how, when there's money left over on the lunch account that parents set up and a student graduates, does the student, the family of the graduate get like a notification that there's money left over and what they can do with it? And so, thanks to that feedback, we And so thanks to that feedback, we brought it back to Policy Committee, and that's the change you see here for first read. So that graduating seniors will receive a notification through Food Service to say you have $200 left on your account, would you like to? And then there's options, including transferring it to another student, giving it to the district to go towards Food Service, or receiving money back. I can only speak for my children that there is typically zero left at the end because they know how much chocolate milk they can buy at the end of school year. But it's still a great point in trying to be proactive that if there's money left over, what process parents have when a student graduates. So that's the change you see here. It's first read, it's open for comment, it's online, and then we'll bring it back for a second and approval after it's reviewed for two weeks.
Great. Any questions on that, Board members? No? Okay, great. So we'll bring that back at next meeting. So we're on to Monroe County School Board Committee meetings. Did I miss one? No? Okay. Mark, were you at Labor Relations?
Yes.
Yes. Would you like to speak to that?
One moment.
That's okay.
So the Labor Relations was another presentation also by Hilton. They've shared quite a bit of what they've had to experience, and this one was basically recruiting during a labor shortage. And it covered a lot of, some of the statistics about the decline, actually very surprising decline in enrollment in New York State teacher programs, teacher ed programs. And it's declined since, the dates were small here, but let's say in the past 13, 14 years, it's declined by 50%, you know? And then we talk, and then some of the conversations are tied to the difficulties in getting reciprocity from teachers from other states, because there are states that, well, there's states have different philosophies on education. And I think we can be attractive to teachers from other states if the reciprocity and getting certified with the New York State was easier. But basically talked about this, what they do for advertising, what they do for communicating, what's worked and what hasn't worked. I didn't have a handout, and I think it's probably in our Monroe County School Board Association page too, except for wanting to see that. So that was, again, that was what we're all dealing with, but it was very well-presented, their experience.
Thank you. Questions for Mark on that?
Can I just share? I think it's great, we talk about these Monroe County School Board meetings, Labor Relations and Information Exchange, just as both a thank you to Hilton and for what you reported. Dr. Driffl, I believe, was there as well, came back, and one of the things that we've done a little bit with, but really started digging in, is our Facebook ads and putting that information out, and being able to utilize boosting to try to get information about what openings we have out, and just monitoring that, like the number of people who then have shared that, and sort of really trying to get that broader reach. One of the pieces is, paper newspapers are, you know, kind of not, they're really expensive to put ads in, and Hilton shared, and we've dug in, is we don't know what sort of bang-for-all buck we get for paper ads. But really, the boosting on Facebook, so, you know, kudos to our Director of Communication, Dr. Driffl, and Dr. Kenny, all working to do that. So it's great when we get information from other districts and other school boards to share, and so, thank you. And now I'm going to have to go and thank Casey, the Hilton Superintendent, as well. But thank you for bringing that information back, Mark.
Yep.
Okay, and several of us attended the convention, the New York State School Board Association Convention, last week, so I was going to ask and see if anyone or everyone would like to share something about the convention, if you are so inclined. I have lots of notes. I could share for a long time. It's still early, but.
All right, I'll go first. I was able to attend this convention. It was my first one. It was, I had no expectations. A lot of people told me, have fun. I'm like, okay. But I did have fun. I learned a lot in that it was amazing to see how many representatives from New York State, like some places I never even heard about, showed up. And these folks were, it was such a welcoming, collaborative vibe and feeling. And I am the board member that speaks about food. So yes, there was food there, they fed us. But it was the conversations we were able to have, and I had a really hard time, like the board members, fellow board members, we sat, and we're like, okay, are you going to go to this one and this one? And it was just the sharing of information, and the focus is really our children of New York State and what to do, what is the best thing we can do for them? How can we help them thrive and be the stars that we know that they can be? And what we got from, so two things. I attended one on hunger in this wonderful rural district. They developed this hunger program to feed the kiddos, especially during COVID. And it was four regular human beings that started this. And they had no idea what they were doing, and they just did it. And they reached out to Annie and everybody. They had, they used libraries to store food and large warehouses, and they asked for all these amazing things, and they got it. They got it. So I felt pretty proud because, like, P-Town's already doing that. I know during COVID, we had a wonderful, like, our food staff, the library at Bay Trail was turned into a kitchen, and it was just amazing what we did during COVID for our kids. And then the other one was the talk by the Commissioner. She joined us virtually. And everything is based on equity, accessibility, kindness, and just what is best for the children. Every session I attended, everybody, every person I listened to, even the students, we had a wonderful presentation by the students. So I can't wait to go next year. So I was really glad that I attended. Yeah. And I'll share more.
Sure.
I would agree. It was also my first one. It was very knowledgeable. We tried to split up some of our things that we went to. I think the highlight for me was our keynote speaker, Marlee Matlin, spoke, and it was, I actually cried because she talked about access and how, when she's a deaf actress, and how her parents pushed her into the classroom and made sure that she had what she needed, and they didn't send her away to a deaf school. And just the growth that she made and the success that she's had was just amazing and just reminds us of why we do what we do. Like, we're here for kids, and we want to make sure we're giving all kids access and making sure that we are being equitable. And then along the same lines, there was also things with hiring processes, like what are some hiring processes that we can be doing, and just to reevaluate where we're going, where are we going, and are there ways to, you know, offer a flip grid for our first three interviews to get more people in that can't really necessarily travel four states over for the quick little, you know, pre-interview phase to see if they make it past that phase? There was a lot of other just business pieces as well, on top of, you know, reminding that what we're doing is really, it's about the kids.
Thank you.
Yes. The nice thing about this year was in Syracuse, which is very convenient, you know, a lot of times it's in New York City, which is, you know, it takes a lot more commitment to go down there, and it's a lot more expensive to go down there. What I would like to cover, you know, I saw, I've been to this before, I've been to a lot of these, I went to presentations that I hadn't normally gone to. There's two things I really want to point out that I think are, you know, really timely. The first one was a presentation called "Embracing Student Activism." And it was about a district, and I'm going to just say it phonetically.
Salamanca.
Salamanca.
I won't be able to say it.
Salamanca. So that is an indigenous, and I didn't even know there was such a thing. That's an indigenous district. That is, you know, it is one that I think is within the Indian space. And I'm sorry, I'm short on my words right now. But basically, what these students, these students went to their teacher and said they want to be, you know, I wouldn't say activists, they wanted to make change. And the teacher, you know, was a very supportive teacher, but he was very caught. I think he was, you know, realistic in what might happen. So they worked together, and the school worked together, put together a program on how to do it. You can't just go out and do things, you've got to understand how to do it and why to do it. And they were really successful. Three of the students were there, they spoke incredibly articulate, they will do great things. One of the things they did, because this is called a federally-impacted district, which these are districts that are impacted mainly from a fiscal perspective, because a lot of their property, where they get property tax, is either Indian territory, which, I'm sorry, Native American territory, which they don't get property tax on. It could be military bases, it could be national parks. All those areas, there's no revenue for that. And it's not just this one district, there's districts around the country that are impacted by this. And there was some federal legislation that was in the works to come up with additional funding for these districts, and they went down there and spoke with different representatives, and talking about the impact of it, and they really helped make those changes. So the whole point of it is, and when they were talking, I just really want to say is, I thought about two groups that we've seen, right? And again, forgive me, because I'm not going to say it right. The one group that was talking about, again, the history of our locality, and, you know, that is, and understanding where we are and what the indigenous history of it was. And, you know, they've spoken to us several times, you know, in the beginning, the sort of introducing themselves, they talked about what they've done to learn about their area, and, you know, and we're supportive of them, and I'm proud to see what they've done. The other group is the one for environmental awareness, or actually climate change, where they did a lot of research, and they've come to us, speaks more than once. So I see student activism, and, you know, it's, and it can be very supportive, and we can teach them, people how to do it. We can teach them to make the kinds of changes that are positive changes. And, you know, it's easy to be afraid of this, and to think, oh, no, what are they going to do? They're going to be disruptive, they're going to create turmoil. But with the right kind of instruction, with the right kind of guidance, they can take their energy and make it something very constructive. And that's what I think my biggest takeaway from that presentation was. The other one was the Commissioner, and I have to reiterate, is, you know, Dr. Rosa is our Commissioner of Education. She did talk about equity, you know, she talked about equity in many ways, and one of the ways that she talked about equity was district to district. You know, we have urban districts, suburban districts, and rural districts, and not every district has access to the same resources or the same programs, and they are committed to equity in terms of programs. So, you know, we're very fortunate, we're extremely fortunate where we are. But there are, you know, like, rural districts, and I know not too far from here, where we don't, they don't have the ability just to do some of the basic things we take for granted, and they have to partner up just to do that. So, you know, really working to give them access to the kinds of programs we take for granted. The other thing that they was talking about doing is putting a lot of, putting more resources into the trades, because the trades, we all know, there's a shortage of people qualified in the trades. It has gotten, I was going to say overlooked, but, you know, it's always fallen secondary to college education for a long time, but now it's coming back. And they're talking about what they're trying to do to promote that, and again, make that be more accessible to students, you know, around the state. So, you know, as you mentioned, it's really about how can we make this, you know, create education, give educational opportunities, make students career and college-ready for the students throughout the states. Some states need more help, I mean, some districts need more help, some need less. But they really want that equal opportunity, equal outcome opportunity for all of our students. And I think, you know, that's really what our SED is trying to do.
Great. Thank you. I have lots of notes to share. I won't share them all. But what I'm finding very interesting, to your point, is, it was very relevant this year, because we've had years where, you know, we've been before, and you're like, do we go again? Like, you know, so, to me, a couple of things I wanted to bring up that were really relevant. I saw a presentation about space, and we had our students here talking about space, which was really great. And it was actually a presentation by Westerandacoid, so we'll have to tap them. They have some consultants looking at spaces for students and how to make them accessible and really working, so I think that's cool that, you know, we're sort of doing that. I went to the BOSI's consortium meeting, how do you say that word? Is that right?
Consortium.
Oh, look at, I'm getting better at this. And they talked about workforce development, universal lunch, electronic bus funding, CTE funding, so all the things that, you know, that we're talking about in legislative, they're talking about that as a group, taking forward to Albany. So that was really wonderful. And then I saw this wonderful presentation and training for gender and gender fluidy, yeah, that word. And the striking thing, that this woman had done a lot, a lot of research, and she said the number-one bullied student in K through 12 is a student with a disability. The number-one student bullied in 9 through 12 is a person in the LBGTQ community. And it just, and it brings back to, you know, our conversations from public comment tonight, and our equity work, and really having all students belong, and I just, it really, really struck me that, those stats. So, but I have lots of notes on that one. Krista attended that with me, it was really great.
It was very science-based and lots of research. It was very, very good.
Yeah. So I hope, I hope she can come here. I talked to her after. She does a BOSI's cross-contract thing, so I'll get you guys all the scoop. All right, so that brings us to, any questions? Anyone have any questions for those of us that attended? All right. It brings us to our Code of Conduct Committee, and I couldn't attend because I was at the conference, and Nicole's not with us tonight. Do you want to give a little snapshot on?
So we started the conversation with kind of applying two lenses or understanding two lenses, and they were deficit-based discipline and asset-based responses. And so with deficit-based discipline, it's really asking the question, what's wrong with students? And we, as schools, find that we need to fix students. There's a failure, that students are failure, that there are deficits, and the deficits lie within the student, their family, the community, or the culture. The inability to follow rules indicates that there's a flaw that we need to correct or punish with students. Adults know best, adults hold the power, and ultimately have the authority, and that there is exclusionary discipline. And often, this occurs as a result of the assumptions and biases that we may bring to students. So that's considered the deficit-based discipline. Where we look to see what the strengths are for our students, we have asset-based responses. And that looks like schools partnering and learning more about students and their families. It's leveraging students' knowledge and their cultures and their experiences and their values and their perspectives as assets. It's the failure to follow the rules, and it's the communication of an unmet need that a student may have. Students are partners, and power is shared, and it's a responsibility to share with students. We have an intentionality to be inclusive and have an inclusive approach, and there's intentionality also around challenging cultural and societal stereotypes. So that's asset-based, and we're really looking for strengths. So we use those two lenses and apply them to our district code of conduct in its current state. And we were tasked, and keeping in mind that we have many stakeholders that are participating as part of the code of conduct, we have our students, we have families, we have community partners, and we have faculty and administrators as part of this group. And so we really wanted to look, applying these two lenses, and looking for language that currently lives in our code of conduct that is subjective, that is ambiguous, that's exclusionary, that's overly punitive, given the described behavior, and that was deficit-based. And so this first, you know, read of our code of conduct was really taking a look at how is it really supporting and growing and nurturing our students? So this is like the first opportunity to take a look at our code as we're thinking about the following meetings, which will include further digging into our code of conduct, but also taking a look at some others that are local and national examples of codes of conduct, to kind of get a sense of where we are as a district, and what parts maybe live out there that we want to make sure that we're replicating and bringing in, but focusing on the asset-based responses and approaches for our code of conduct. So a lot of great conversation, and I'll just say that the students' voice right in the room, you know, thinking about all of the stakeholders that are present. the room, you know, thinking about all of the stakeholders that are present, they are so integral to the design and the outcome of what will become our code of conduct when we're finished, and they have so much to offer. Just listening to them contribute, because really, we're designing a code for them, so it's about them, and having their voices present is the best part of the work. Dr. Putnam, I know you want to add to that.
I just, I'm glad you said that. I just, I'm always amazed, the students we have from Bay Trail come over and the high school, it's a big commitment. They, just like, again, in working in, you know, K-12 public schools, like, you would think sometimes when I talk to folks who aren't in education, you know, and friends with, it's like, oh, well, the kids want no rules. No, the kids are amazing. Like, they're really solid on wanting clear rules, clear expectations, and so I just, I love that, and they come at it from a very unique take, and just, too, is the number of stakeholders we have, it's a large group, and again, the process is, we'll update every month and, you know, have lots of public conversation as it gets more developed and fine-tuned, and as the Board knows, any code of conduct has to have an official hearing and board approval. But some really amazing work, really digging in, and it's a great partnership with the Children's Institute and the stakeholders from across multiple groups in our community.
Great, thank you. Any questions on that? Nope? All righty. We have no unfinished business this evening. Do we have any new business? Nope? All right. Then may I please have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at 8:10 PM?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kathryn, and second by Mark. I'm assuming there's no questions on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.